Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Zwicker.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Ms. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Ms. Breyer.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a special presentation, Chief Milosevic.
Mayor Law, Council President Zwicker, members of the council. My name is Kevin Milosevic. I have the pleasure to be the Police Chief for the City of Renton. Thank you for this opportunity tonight to recognize several members of the Renton Police Department. It's kind of two phases. Once, we're going to recognize those members who have been promoted within the last year, followed by our annual Employees of the Quarter and our Employees of the Year for 2011. I'll first start off with the promotions. All four of these department members possess similar attributes, attributes that we look for in current and future leaders. They are all former field training officers who have shown a desire to train future officers. They are all respected throughout the department and they lead by example. All four possess skills and experience from a wide variety of assignments that enhance their leadership abilities. And they all possess and display a sincere desire to be the best they can be and this attitude is reflected on the officers that they supervise. First is Sergeant Jeff Eddy. Will you please come forward? Jeff has 21 years of law enforcement experience. He was hired in 1996. Prior to spending his time at the Renton Police Department, he spent approximately six years with the University of Washington Police Department. He was assigned to bicycle patrol in 1998. He became a field training officer in 2002. He was selected to be an instructor of the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission in 2004. And during the next six years, he was responsible for training hundreds of officers who attended the Washington State Bicycle Law Enforcement Academy in patrol procedures. He was also directly responsible for several academy classes as your primary TAC officer. And the TAC officer's responsibility is, for the most part, the daily care and feeding of 30 brand-new officers during a five-month period. In 2010, he returned to the department and was appointed, again, as a field training officer. On June 16th, 2011, he was promoted to sergeant and assigned to one of our day shift patrol squads. On a personal note, Jeff is an outstanding instructor. Quite often when I'm out of the academy during that period of time he was assigned out there, I'd have fellow instructors, supervisors at the academy, the academy commander himself, and actually the director come forward and say what an outstanding TAC officer Jeff was and beg for us to extend him each time this time would come up. So, when it came to 2010, Jeff is done. He was ready to come back and resume his career with the department. So, congratulations, Jeff. Next is Sergeant John O'Wye. John couldn't be here this evening. He's home ill, but I will briefly go over his resume with the department. He has 21 years of law enforcement experience. He was hired with Renton in 1998. He previously spent seven years with the Honolulu Police Department where he was assigned for five years in the Narcotics and Vice Division. He was appointed to be a field training officer in 2001 and for years has been an instructor with our defensive tactics program in the department. He was appointed to Investigations in 2004 where he spent most of that time as the primary detective responsible for investigating cases of domestic violence where he developed an outstanding regional reputation. John was selected as one of the first officers in the newly-created Special Operations Division in 2007. And after a couple of years, he chose to come back to patrol to work on his future leadership abilities and skills. And then, he came back in 2009 to patrol and then was promoted to sergeant in August 16th of 2011 and assigned to one of our graveyard squads. John is one of our first bilingual officers. He is fluent in both reading and writing the Spanish language. We have since hired additional bilingual officers, but he's been very active within the City Hall and also with our sister city in Coatla in translation and services for our department. So, that's Sergeant John O'Wye. Next is Sergeant Kevin Keys. Kevin has almost 16 years of law enforcement experience. He was hired in 2000. He spent over three years with the Kirkland Police Department prior to coming to the City of Renton. He was selected to become a School Resource Officer in 2002. And then, he gave that up, becoming a narcotics detective in 2003. And after four years in that assignment, he returned back to patrol in 2007. Then became an FTO in 2008. And then, he took an assignment again in Investigations in 2008 as a detective. During the last several years as a detective, he was the lead investigator in several homicides and also officer-involved shootings involving outside jurisdictions. During a recent officer-involved shooting a couple of years ago, we're responsible for the investigation. The agency's chief highly praised the skills and abilities of Kevin in that investigation. It was a very critical investigation for their agency and he had nothing but praise to say for the outstanding job that Kevin did in being the lead investigator in that case. In anticipation of his promotion, Kevin requested to be reassigned as soon as possible back to patrol so he could re-equino himself with patrol operations prior to his promotion. So, just last week, Kevin was promoted on March 1st to sergeant. He was assigned to one of our graveyard squads. Last but not least is Commander Ed Van Bailey. Ed is a proud graduate of Lindbergh High School. Just ask him. He has 14 years of law enforcement experience, all with the City of Renton. He was originally hired by the Parks Department before we hired him. He was assigned to bicycle patrol in 2002 and he was appointed as an FTO in 2006. He was promoted to sergeant in 2008, assigned to patrol. And then, February 1st this year, he was promoted to commander and is responsible for Patrol Division, the north sector of the city. On the next part of time, he's a major in the Army National Guard, assigned as an operations officer for the Army Air Force Joint Task Force Headquarters for the state of Washington. And as you recall, he was deployed for almost two years in 2003 in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom. More recently, Ed has been responsible for our department's Field Training Officer Program and he is currently an FTO instructor responsible for training all future FTOs in the state of Washington. So, congratulations. That concludes that portion of the science presentation. And now, we're going to move the formal recognition for Employees of the Quarter and Employees of the Year. The department has a formal recognition program that is employee-based rather than top-down. Department members are nominated by their peers for the award and the decision is made by a committee of line-level employees. Typically, we have four employees of the quarter, but for some reason, last year, only had three. So, once the employee is selected as Employee of the Quarter, then that makes them eligible for Employee of the Year. So, we'll start off with Terry Vickers. Come forward, please. Terry Vickers is a Community Programs Coordinator. She was selected as Employee of the Quarter for the second quarter of 2011. She was selected because of her incredible work ethic as well as the quality of the work that she performs. Terry is a Community Programs Coordinator for the department. In this role, she provides support to other members of the division. She has led the department effort with annual return to Renton Car Show for several years now. She has developed forms for registration and brochures, helped procure raffle prizes, provided correspondence, and assisted with t-shirts and designs, not to mention meeting year-round and then spending about 12 hours in the return to Renton Car Show downtown. In addition to her regular position, Terry is also one of the department's negotiators for the Valleywide Crisis Communication Unit. Used to be called HOS's Negotiator, if that makes a little more sense. She has the talent to negotiate with many different types of individuals and has been successfully resolving several critical incidents. Terry is the primary Public Information Officer for the department. She responds to crime scenes as a liaison between the media and the officers on scene, taking the pressure off the people in charge so they can focus on the actual investigation and their other duties. So, congratulations, Terry. Next is Detective Pete Cordell. Detective Pete Cordell has been selected as Employee of the Quarter for the fourth quarter of 2011. Pete's peers selected him because he truly exemplifies the characteristics of an exceptional Renton police officer. In addition to being a dedicated and thorough investigator, Detective Cordell works extremely well with his coworkers, peers from other agencies, and the prosecutor's office. Shortly after coming into Investigations Division, Detective Cordell handled an extensive embezzlement case involving the Benson Hill Football Organization and was able to make arrest in this case. Pete has a reputation of always being one of the first to volunteer for cases and always willing to help others out. He quickly responds to call-outs and is willing to take on any role assigned to him. More recently, Detective Cordell was assigned as one of the primary investigators in a Federal Way Officer Involved Shooting. Chief Wilson from Federal Way noted the outstanding job he did on the investigation. On numerous occasions, both the municipal and the Superior Court prosecutors have remarked on the level of detail and documentation that Detective Cordell puts in his cases. In addition to all this, Detective Cordell comes to work with a sense of humor and a smile on his face nearly every day. His knowledge and work ethic is respected by his peers and supervisors alike. So, congratulations, Pete. Officer Wayne Blackard. Officer Wayne Blackard has been selected as the Employee of the Quarter for the third quarter of 2011 and also selected as Employee of the Year for 2011. Officer Blackard's peers selected him because he truly exemplifies the characteristics of an exceptional Renton police officer. In addition to his patrol duties, he has taken on leadership roles while serving as a defensive tactic instructor, field training officer, and officer in charge. Officer Blackard leads by example and fosters high standards among his peers. He is a role model with a high degree of professionalism, integrity, and character. Officer Blackard consistently goes above and beyond the scope of his duties in providing outstanding service to the public, developing interpersonal relationships with his coworkers, keeping abreast of legal and police procedures, training other officers, and constantly being a go-to resource for line-level staff. Now, the past few months have been a great example of Officer Blackard's abilities and unselfish dedication to the department. Due to some personnel changes without complaint, he has regularly moved from the north to the south to take on responsibility of serving as an OIC, oftentimes without prior notice. He has done this while continuing to fill his responsibilities as working as an FTO and handling defensive tactics training. Officer Blackard is also active in the community by serving as vice president on two boards that serve area youth, the Valley Wolf Pack Football Team and the South Peaches Sound Junior Football League. Both organizations create positive recreational opportunities for our local youth. Our local communities and the entire Renton Police Department benefit from his leadership, professionalism, service, and hard work that Officer Blackard delivers every day. Please do me a congratulations, Officer Wayne Blackard. That concludes tonight's presentation.
Thank you very much, Chief. Yes, Mr. Person.
Would it be possible, I saw people in the back flashing cameras, that maybe we could get a DVD of this presentation and give to the department so that each officer could have their own?
You bet we can do that. Go.
Do you have a photo?
Okay.
All right, so after everybody settles, I'm just going to have to move me around just a little bit so it's still sun. All right, several shots, if I could, real quick. Lift it open, shoot a little higher on this one. Second, and right here, big smiles. One more shot following this one. Came out great, and... Great, thank you. Does family want to take a quick shot, real quick? Good, all right.
We just get better and better at that.
Just follow. You don't even have to look at the floor for access anymore.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, Mr. Pete, let's see you follow that.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I never can. I always get set up this way. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council for the record. My name is Alex Peach. I'm the administrator of the Department of Community and Economic Development. And tonight, we're here with a present, a public hearing regarding school impact fees. As you know, the city acts as a pass-through for the three districts that have jurisdiction within Renton to help them fund impacts to schools based on development. And we have a brief presentation for you tonight. Raquel Timmons, a planner on our staff, is here to lead you through that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, President Zwicker, members of the council. For the record, my name is Raquel Timmons, Associate Planner for the Department of Community and Economic Development. And as Mr. Peach mentioned, I have a very brief presentation for our public hearing tonight. Impact fees are only assessed on new development and can only be used for capital facilities, not for operations or maintenance. They're used to help offset impact of growth on the new school facilities and they are based on an assessment included in each of the respective district's capital facilities plans. For the Isiqua School District, their capital facilities plan includes the expansion of an elementary and middle school. And as part of that, they are requesting an impact fee of $3,568 to be collected on behalf of their district for each single-family home. This is a decrease from last year of $240. For the Kent School District, they're requesting an impact fee of $5,486 for each single-family home. This would be a continuation of the fee from last year. Also, the same for their multifamily units, which they are requesting a collection of $3,378. The Renton School District is requesting an impact fee of $6,392. This is an $82 increase from last year, and that's for each single-family home. And then, for their multifamily units, the school district is requesting a $1,274 impact fee, which is a $16 increase from last year. Staff is not requesting any action tonight and this item has already been referred to the Committee of the Whole for review. That's all I have.
Thanks, Raquel. Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I just had one. Can perhaps someone remind me that the request from the Renton School District, is that the same amount that was requested or that King County has already agreed to pay to the Renton School District?
Yes. That's been adopted for the year 2012.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. We have two people signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name for the record and city of residence. And you have five minutes. John Knutson.
Mayor Law, members of the council, I'm John Knutson, Assistant Superintendent for Business Operations for the Renton School District. I live at 12601 Southeast 255th Place in Kent. My comments tonight will be brief. You may know that there was a, we submitted a draft plan and that was picked up in some of your materials, which showed a significant increase. And the figures that Ms. Timmons just showed you are now the corrected figures. There was a question at the Committee of the Whole hearing that I attended a few days ago, and it's which jurisdictions, one, that are contiguous with Renton and which do we collect fees from? Renton, City of Renton, of course, unincorporated King County, and those are the two that are currently set up for impact fees for the Renton School District. Bellevue and Newcastle, Taquilla, Kent, and Sea-Tac are the other cities, jurisdictions. And we're currently not requesting fees for many of those, although we're doing some work and taking a closer look at that. There's a question as to whether City of Seattle has any territory within the Renton School District. I have records that show that they do not. I understand that other records show that they do, so we'll be taking a real close look at that to make that determination. Renton is relatively new in the impact fee business. I believe two, maybe three years, that's correct. So, we do not, we have not currently requested from other jurisdictions, primarily Bellevue. We're doing some work and looking. Bellevue has 26 undeveloped parcels in the area that's covered by Renton School District, so we'll be working with them. And I do intend, if there is property in Bellevue, Newcastle, or Taquilla, to make the request. Newcastle, staff works proceeding on identifying parcels. I don't have a number for that right now. And then, but we will be making that request and doing that additional work. Taquilla, Kent, well, Canton, Sea-Tac, in Kent, 100% of the area is commercial or industrial-zoned with no current residential area or potential. Sea-Tac is a very small area, very similar situation, although it's zoned, low-density residential, but there's been no development or plan since 1949 in that small portion, which is just to the east of I-5. Taquilla has some area that has potential for residential development. I understand that that's a few years out. We will be taking a look at that and working with the city to make that determination. Any questions?
Any questions from council? Okay, thank you. Next is Steve Crawford.
Steve Crawford, Director of Capital Projects, Isaguas School District, 565 Northwest Holly Street, Isiqua, Washington. Appreciate your consideration of impact fees while they are not as significant a factor in our capital funding program as they once were. They do represent a significant portion and they're extremely important to our constituency who feels that new construction should pay a fair share of the costs of new school facilities. That's been a significant issue in our district in the past. We, as well as all the other school districts in King County, develop our impact fees based on a King County formula that goes through quite involved process of site costs, building costs, portable costs, credits and such to come up with a number. Ours is quite a bit lower now than it has been in the past. It's gone down a little bit this year, but again, those are all factors based on the formula developed by King County. So, we do collect impact fees in the jurisdictions in our districts, Amish, Isiqua, King County, Bellevue, Newcastle, and Renton in the past and hopefully again in the future. And again, we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council on this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Move the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Prince that this public hearing be closed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Just a reminder, there's no action this evening. Thank you, Raquel.
Thank you.
Okay, next is administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Mr. Mayor, council, we had a couple of items, actually three items that I wanted to just make mention of tonight, all dealing with our Senior Activity Center, which is always a place of activity and excitement for seniors. Three events coming up. The first is this Wednesday, a dinner dance sponsored by the Kiwanis Club. Folks can go there from 5:00 to 7:00 for spaghetti and meatballs, salad, garlic bread, and Spelmoni ice cream, plus dancing with music provided by the John Giuliani's Combo Band. So, great time to be had. Folks, if they're interested, can contact the Senior Center for more information. Again, that's Wednesday from 5:00 to 7:30. Then, on St. Patrick's Day, people can go to the Senior Activity Center for a free breakfast provided by the center and the Knights of Columbus. It's the 12th year that the Knights of Columbus have been providing that free breakfast. Again, they can contact the Senior Center for more information. That is from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, March 17th. And finally, on March 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, the center will be hosting a housing fair for senior citizens. We have over 20 senior housing groups will be available there to answer questions about retirement homes, assisted living communities, senior apartment homes, low-income housing, and other housing placement options. We know that there are a variety of options out there for folks and we hope to have these groups come in and provide information that will help seniors in their selection. Again, people can contact our Senior Center for more information. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Covington. I don't have anybody signed up for audience comments, so moving on to consent agenda. There are eight items on the consent agenda for council consideration. Are there any items that council member would like polled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Hearing none, I move that the council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Corman that council concur with the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Zwicker.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Wow, people have been pretty lazy this morning.
Ah, but Ms. Breyer has been hard-hitting.
Don't forget me.
Let's just see what Mr. Prince did this week.
No unfinished business.
Moving on to Ms. Breyer.
I have two committee reports.
Finance Committee Report. Approval of Claims and Payroll Vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on March 5th, 2012, Claim Vouchers 310087 through 310360, four wire transfers, and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $4,663,182.22. And payroll vouchers include 754 direct deposits and 65 payroll checks totaling $1,586,568.18. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Taylor that council approve the Finance Committee Report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee Report. Lease Addendum Number One with Birthday Dream for Site at Liberty Park Community Building. The Finance Committee recommends concurrent with the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign a lease addendum number one with Birthday Dreams, a nonprofit corporation, for Suite 200 at the Liberty Park Community Building. This lease will provide the city with $2,400 of annual revenue, of additional revenue annually. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
First, I want to comment the fact that this is the second week in a row that King Parker hasn't been in attendance, so I don't, maybe that's confidence that we're doing okay without him.
Oh, that's right.
And with that, I'd like to make a motion that council concur with the Finance Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Taylor that council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to resolutions and ordinances, which we have none, so we'll just scoot right along to new business. By that, Mr. Zwicker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, two items. First, last week, I had the opportunity to join other Rentonians and some students from Renton High School at the Renton History Museum Two-by-Two exhibit. And I highly recommend everybody in the listening audience, as well as my council colleagues, to attend. It's running through May 26th. And it really was a remarkable opening for the presentation. The students were there, a lot of energy. It's an interesting, I'll just read the quick verb of what it is. It's for an exhibit about Renton High Centennial in 2011. The museum worked with current students to get their take on high school life. Now, Renton High students return again to reinterpret Renton history from their perspective. In autumn of 2011, honors English students spent a week at the museum studying our collection of historic photos and objects and came up with Two-by-Two, Students Reinterpret Renton History. And it's really interesting, they took just different things from the collection historically and then added an item from their own personal collection and how they were interpreting it. And it's almost, it defies description, but it's remarkable. And I just, it's really neat to see the way our current students are looking back at some of the things, you know, from way back in the '60s, you know. at 6:00 p.m. in the seventh-floor conferencing center. We have one agenda item, and that is the Risk Management Annual Report. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utility Committee will be meeting March 12th at 5:30 p.m. in the council conference room, and we will be discussing three items. One will be the Automatic Meter Reader Program. Second would be the Utility Bill Adjustment Policy. And then, third would be a consulted agreement with Roth Hill for Wastewater's Hydraulic Modeling. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a Transportation Committee to announce. The meeting will be March 8th, 2012, that's Thursday, at 3:30 p.m., and that's in the council conference room. Two items on that agenda. First is Taxiway Bravo Rehabilitation Project Middleton Contract. Second item is emerging issues in transportation, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, Community Services Committee will meet on Monday, March 12th, from 5:00 to 5:30 in the council conference room. We have two items on the agenda. The first is neighborhood newsletter grants, and the second is Parks Golf Course 2011 Summary Briefing, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Person?
No new business, Mr. Person.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a Planning and Development Committee meeting on Monday, March 8th, or Thursday, March 8th, from 4:00 to 6:00 in the council chambers, and we'll be doing the Horn Rezone Appeal.
Okay, thank you. I didn't miss anybody, did I? So, next is audience comment. Is there anybody that'd like to address the council?
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, that we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.
Has a fire escape plan and practices it twice a year. It's important to make sure that your escape plan has two ways out of each room in your home. Protect your family from fire. For more information, visit sparky.org.